Mr. Ali.
President.
Mr. Brockman.
Here.
Mr. Carter.
Here.
Ms. James.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Mr. Legori. Dr. Patel. Ms. Toth.
Here.
And Mr. Wen.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM on Monday, January 29, 2024, and Tuesday, March 19, 2024 in the following manner. Posted on the bulletin board reserved for announcements in the Board Office, 25 Linwood Place, North Brunswick, mailed to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, NJ.com, and the Clerk of the Township of North Brunswick, and delivered to the nine duly-elected Board members. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is doing well. Happy to be in a new school year. And we have a couple of presentations tonight, so at this point, I will turn it over to Superintendent Chirica to welcome our guests.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, everyone. Our first presentation is one that we have generally had over the last few years, and we're very happy to have them back, from the Aubrey Foundation to talk about the annual Purple for Pappas 5K, Fran Alvarez and Emily Alver- Emily Angeles.
Emily Alvarez.
Your doctor.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fran Alvarez. I think you've seen me here before. And I'm here tonight with Emily Angeles. We're here on behalf of the Aubrey Foundation. The Aubrey Foundation is a local 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that was created 10 years ago. The foundation was established in memory of beloved Linwood Middle School teacher Aubrey Pappas. The Aubrey Foundation's mission is centered upon bringing this community together to celebrate Aubrey's life and in turn give back to the community in Aubrey's name via the Aubrey Pappas Memorial Scholarship. The money raised primarily goes to the students of North Brunswick Township High School via scholarships. Throughout the past 10 years, we have been able to give back over $90,000 to both the North Brunswick Township and its schools. Your constant support has been unwavering these past few years, and we would love to have you all support us again at this year's Purple for Pappas 5K on Sunday, October 20. This race marks the 10th Annual Purple for Pappas 5K, and it will be the last one we host. We are branding it as our hashtag #FinalLapToTheFinish, since it will be the final race, and we hope to make it the biggest celebration of Aubrey's life thus far, and acknowledge all of the wonderful things that we have been able to accomplish through her memory together.
It has been a decade of honoring and remembering Aubrey by checking off this bucket list item for her running a 5K, and using what the race has given us to provide for the North Brunswick Township students and others in the community, wherever there is the greatest need. This is so much more than just a race. The Purple for Pappas 5K provides an opportunity for children, families, teams, coworkers, friends, and colleagues to come together to enjoy a morning filled with music, prizes, food, games, and fun. Whether you're a runner, a walker, stroller, or prefer to volunteer, this race welcomes everyone. Purple is Aubrey's favorite color, and to us, purple means power. It means positive energy, encouragement, and empowerment, and those are elements, those elements are what this race embodies. We've seen racers cross the finish line ranging in age from zero to 81. That is our purple power. In 10 years, the Purple for Pappas 5K has watched over 1,600 people cross our finish line. This race has led to a tremendous impact that the Aubrey Foundation continues to make for the students and the township of North Brunswick in Aubrey's name. The way Aubrey lived is still being taught and instilled in the students and community of North Brunswick. Over $90,000 and counting has been donated across various causes in the North Brunswick community. Our goal this year is to donate over $10,000, I'm sorry, $100,000 in year 10. To catch a glimpse of how much fun and exciting race day is, here's a clip of last year's race.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the 9th Annual Purple for Pappas 5K. So much more than a race, the Purple for Pappas 5K is about bringing people together to accomplish something we wouldn't be able to do alone. Community, fun, resilience, encouragement, and legacy remind us of our Aubrey and strive for what this race is all about. These words bring all of us closer to our mission, which drives us to live like Aubrey wherever we are. Through this race, we strive to keep the spirit while raising money to support our philanthropy projects. 100% of the money we raise today will benefit North Brunswick Township via student scholarships, the Aubrey Pappas Fund of the North Brunswick Middle School, First Rezonders, Veterans, and other Aubrey Foundation endemacies. Our work would not be possible without your support for the generosity and support of our devoted sponsors. Over the past nine years, this group with your help has been able to win $87,000. Aubrey's energy used to move us all, it's a gift that she helped us with beautiful energy, and the way she lived has become her best, and the Purple for Pappas 5K strives to do this. As you can see in the video, each and every year, everyone brings their purple power, painting the pavement purple to honor and celebrate Mrs. Pappas. Again, our race is on Sunday, October 20. If you would like to register, please visit our website at theaubreyfoundation.org. And thank you for your time. We hope to see you on race day. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Alvarez, Ms. Angeles. We really appreciate you coming out. We know the impact that the foundation has had on our students, providing mentoring, clubs, scholarships, and really being a force for Aubrey in the school. So we really appreciate it, and we hope that people will make the effort to come out. It's a lot of fun. It's a beautiful fall day, and I've been there each year and enjoyed every time. So please, please come join us. You don't have to run, right? You can walk. You can also do it virtually, but it is a fun, a fun community event, so thank you. Our next presentation is our annual NJSLA Spring Test Results. Mrs. Mercedes Chang will be presenting.
I do not have a cute video. Hi, everybody. Hi, Board Members. This is Chirica. Chirica's gonna click away for me, and I'm pleased to present to you last year's 2023-2024 NJSLA scores. You could see some improvement. I'm gonna be highlighting that for you today. Not much has changed about the test, so I'll zoom by some of that, as many of us are super familiar with the assessment. It is a state-mandated assessment. It does help meet our federal requirements as well, and we do administer it in ELA, math, and science. We have a wide window, and our district gets to choose when we do that. Our grade 3 through 9 students take two units of ELA, three units of math for our 3 through 8th graders, and then our high school assessment courses, which some of our middle school students are also participate in, take two units, but they're a little bit longer. All of our science students, grades 5, 8, and 11, take four units. It's actually the longest test. Our experience hasn't changed that much either in terms of how we administer the assessment. We use all of our classrooms, media centers when necessary. All of our students have their own Chromebooks, and we have extras on hand. All of our test administrators are our certificate teachers. Many of these ladies here are test administrators. Teachers cannot do much, but we can clarify directions, and students have features within PAN, Pearson, Access Next, where they can flag questions, review questions, change answers, and there's a lot of other tools that we're really trying to encourage our students to utilize, such as highlighting features of glossary, things that we hope might help them feel more confident in their responses. So by the numbers, this is my favorite slide, by the way, because I count all of this. We did administer 6,736 tests. 198 students at either at MBTMS took the Algebra I or Geometry NJSLA assessment, which means they're in accelerated courses, and 42 of our high schoolers resent from testing because they're taking higher-level math courses. So if you're in pre-calc as a 9th grader, let's say you don't have to take the NJSLA. So the higher that number is, the better. And what do the results tell us? We did, as always, meet our participation rate. We did a nice job of that, ensuring that all of our students test or make up the test if they're out for any reason. We also were within the five points of the state average on three assessments, ELA 7, 8, and Geometry, and Algebra II testers exceeded the state average. Those are just some highlights. As you recall, NJSLA has five proficiency levels. You need to score a 4 or a 5 to quote-unquote "pass" the test, so a 750 or better. You guys can hear me, right?
Yes.
Our overall scores, I'll just highlight for you, our scale score average for ELA with all the testers 3 through 9 was a 739, which is a 3, and our mathematics scale score average was a 733, which is also a 3. That, both of those scale scores increased from last year by two points. I wanted to give you some comparisons. Last year, I think we had wanted that a little bit more, so I tried to include it in this presentation wherever I could without getting into the maybe mid-grade. And then in science, our scale score average was 159 amongst the three grades that test, and that was an increase of three scale points. What's unfortunate is that it still remains the same scale score, which is a 2 or a 3, but that you see the growth going up, even if it's not changing the proficiency level. And then just for comparison, you can see that the state scale scores right to the right of you were a little bit higher than ours. We're gonna start with ELA. Show me, sure. Yeah, thank you. We had lots of testers. As you can see, the numbers, the grade and the number of students that tested is right there next to it, and then you can see our average scale score for those grades. For example, our 5th graders scored an average scale score of 740, but that was still a 3, and this 8th state scored an average scale score of 750, which is a 4. And I'm not gonna read them all to you. You can see there what our averages were when we compiled or aggregated all the data. We will talk a little bit more depth, though, in, go to the next slide, thank you, and how we performed on each level. Obviously, we want to be at the 4 and 5 level. Those are the passing grades proficiency. At the highest proficiency rate was grade 7 ELA, at 52% of the students passed the test, and the lowest was 3rd grade, at 28% of the students passed the test. But what you're gonna see soon is places where we improved or shifted kids from one level to another, which is important to us. Obviously, the main goal is to get to proficiency, but we can't get there without making the small movements and the small growth, so. Here's where I'm gonna highlight places where we improved. Anything in green is a positive. This is not a slide I've ever had before, so it's new. I'm trying it out. At 3rd grade level, so anything on the left, you wanna see going down, because level 1 and 2, you don't wanna be in those levels, and anything on the right, you wanna see going up. So you can see in 3rd grade that our students improved because almost 4% of them are no longer 1s and 2s, and the same for grade 5, which was a huge improvement, 14% of them are no longer 1s and 2s. And then the same for grade 9. Overall, our improvement was that 3, 3.5% of our kids moved from level 1 and 2. And then if you go all the way to the right, students achieving at the proficiency rate or changes in levels, we had a 3% increase at grade 3, which makes sense, a 13 or almost 14% increase at grade 5, a 5% increase at grade 7, and a 9% increase at grade 9. So those are lots of positives moving in the right direction. Does that all make sense? A lot of number crunching, so I'll let, if you see any mistakes, let me know. So that was our general improvement. The next slide is for our subgroups. We do have to report out on our subgroups, so long as we have more than 10, and we do have more than 10 in almost every category except for, I think it was Hawaiian or ELA.
Pacific Islander.
Pacific Ocean, thank you. So that you won't see here. Our district proficiency levels are at the top for ELA. We had 10% of our students at level 5, which is exceeding, and 31% at level 4, 24% at level 3. And, you know, that's a level that we like to focus on because it's the easiest level to figure out who can help some kids just make that jump to the level 4. It could be one question. It could be just about anything. So we do like to focus on that. And then obviously, our level 1s and 2s are students that are missing a lot of probably prerequisite skills. 16% of them are at level 1 and 18% at level 2. I'll do some highlighting of the subgroups. Our Hispanic population continues to struggle, almost a quarter at each level 1, 2, and 3, and 4% at level 5. Our Asian population continues to exceed or excel. Level 1 was only 5% of the Asian population, whereas level 5 was 26%, and you combine it with level 4, because that's also passing, you've got almost 70% passing rate for the Asian population. Our Black and African-American students, level 1, 18%, but on the other end, 29% of Black and African-American students are level 4, 29, and 8% of them are level 5. If you go down to disabilities, obviously, this is a unique subgroup who has very unique plans, IEPs, and we do take a lot of pride in how we meet their needs, but this test does not take their needs or their instructional program into consideration. So 44% of them at a level 1. It's still something that we want to focus on, but we also want to honor the students' IEPs, which is what we're here to do, and then only 1% of them at level 5. Then our English language learners, 200 of them tested in English Language Arts. You'll see that number is fewer than math because, I'm sorry, it's less more than math? Fewer than math, yes. Fewer than math because a lot of them aren't stamped if they entered the country after June 1st, so you'll see the math numbers a little bit higher. But 52% of our ESL population did not pass the test. They're at a level 1, and 30% are at a level 2. There were no students at a level 5, and very minimal at a level 4. So that is continuing focus for us. For those of us who like graphics, I've included this visual. You can see with the bar graphs, instead of with the chart, how our students are performing. You can see the red is not meaning or 1, and the light green is a level 4, and the dark green is a level 5. So if you'd like to see it that way better, it just gives you a quick, out-of-glance visual. I prefer it that way. Then we're gonna talk about math. We saw some improvement. We'd like to see more, for sure. Our scale average averages are there. As you can see, though, if you just scan all the way down, most of our scale averages fall in the 3 range, which is not passing. 739 is not passing. You're like, you know, 12 points away from being passing. But our Algebra II students, 766, I'm sorry, I may have reversed that because I think Algebra II is 743, and I think Geometry is 766, so I will correct that, only because I know that Geometry is our best assessment result. And then you can see that the state, their averages are almost exactly like us in terms of proficiency level. Their scale points might be a little bit different, but they're all still a 3, just the same. In terms of grade level proficiency, you've got the 3rd graders doing pretty nicely, at 42% of them at a level 4 and 5, when we combine the passing levels. So are obviously our Algebra II and Geometry. 7th grade had 29% of the students passing. All of these numbers, obviously, are needed to improve, and we're hoping to do that with the programming, the curricular changes that we made this summer, and the standard revisions that the state has had us implementing this year. But here are some positives. In 3rd grade, almost 9% of the students moved from the level 1 and 2 with an increase of 7.4 going to level 3 and 4. So anything in the green highlights a positive movement. For example, grade 5, you had more students, only 1.9, but still more in level 1 and 2. So we always want to see that be a negative number, not a positive number. And then on the other end, we want to see those be positives. This one is two pages because there's more math tests. You saw Algebra I students doing much better, almost 8% of them moving away from the level 1 and 2, and almost 12% of them going into 3 and 4 from, as compared to 22, 23. Same for Algebra II. Overall, 3% of our population was able to move from the level 1 and 2 range. 8% of, we'd like it to be higher, but, you know, positive movement is still good. And then when you look at our subgroups, you have similar outcomes that you did in ELA. The district, 35% of our students are passing the assessment when we aggregate the data by district. But in terms of our Hispanic population, only 24% of our students are passing the assessment, whereas 57% of our Asian population is passing the 3 grades, the assessments, the math. It seems like the math assessments, in general, there are lower outcomes than they are in ELA. If you look at the white population, 39% of them are passing the assessment when we combine levels 4 and 5. And then similar struggles or challenges with students with disabilities, 9% of those students are passing the test, 396 of them tested, and our Ls, 6% of our students are passing the test, and 266 of them tested. Your bar graph to help you visualize how each subgroup looks. You can see that the Black and Hispanic population, those, those two are very similar. They're off by like a couple percentage points. And then the Asian population, you can see the big difference there, 52% of them, you know, at the level 4. Lastly, we have our science assessment, which only has four proficiency levels versus the 5. This is an assessment that is, continues to perplex all of us, and I mean around the state, all the colleagues. It just seems that it's almost impossible to pass. If you go to the next slide, Mrs. Chirica, the state scale average is 169, which is a 2, and our district's scale average for 5th grade is 156, which is also a 2. Across the board, the state, all of our students across the state are just earning a 2, basically. And, you know, we've talked a little bit about why could that be, and it could be that our instruction is more hands-on, more experimental, and then when they get on the assessment, it's more content or multiple choice, obviously. So all the things that we do that keep instruction engaging don't translate to, you know, remembering the ecosystem, or, I'm not really good with science, anybody wanna, can you wanna jump in? All that content on stagnant paper, it's just not, it's not translating. So I know that Mrs. Lamagra and Mrs. Lanfeer and our science supervisor, Mrs. Barrett, are working hard at making programmatic changes, but without sacrificing the quality of our science instruction, we have no idea what is on the task that we could possibly do in our curriculum without sacrificing our own units and what we believe is good science instruction. So I really have any excuse for that. I just want to show you that really it's across the state. When you talk about the scores by grade level, it appears that our, it's very similar. 48% of our 5th graders are level 1, 46 of our 8th graders, it's not like one grade is outperforming another by much. 3% of our 5th graders are at a level 4, and 5% and 5% at 8th grade and 11th at a level 4. So across the board, they're all doing about the same, which is really interesting, too. You know, sometimes you'll see a difference in testing when you move from one level to another, but with this assessment, it's like it doesn't matter what grade you're in or classes you're in, you're all just kind of performing the same. classes you're in, you're all just kind of performing the same. I wasn't able to even highlight anything green here because I was trying to only coin out places where we did better by at least three percentage points. I kind of arbitrarily decided that I would highlight anything over three, and we didn't make that kind of movement here. In fact, in eleventh grade, we had an increase in students at level one and two. We did have a two and a half percent decrease of our fifth graders in level one and two, but it's just not a significant enough number. And then subgroup-wise, you can see similarities from ELA and math, but you can still see our Hispanic population sixty-one percent at a level one, and our Asian population fifty percent at a level one. Both those numbers are super high, and definitely for populations that usually perform better, even that is very high. White, thirty-six percent, African-American, fifty-one percent. And then if you look all the way down, our Ls ended this could be because there's so much content-based language, academic language, eighty-eight percent of our Ls at a level one, zero percent at a level five. Just the chart for a visual. You can see across the board, just not too many in the red. And then I collaborated with Dr. Johnson, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, to ensure that I had the right information, right? Like I know a lot, I'm involved, I stay aggressive things, but I want to make sure his department is able to highlight some of the things that we're doing to help our students. So with his collaboration, I want to share with you some things that we're doing to intervene, that we have always been doing, some things that we, some things are continuing. The high school continues to expand academies, Avid and Star. In fact, I know they're redoing some PD for the entire school district on Avid-based strategies, basically effective functioning strategies for students to be able to focus and study, be motivated. Obviously, we continue to offer high-level courses to our ninth and tenth graders because if they're taking them at the middle school, we have to continue that when they get to the high school. We have three hundred and twenty students enrolled in EP courses. That's always a good thing, a positive thing. We are offering High Impact Tutoring with that grant that we received last year to our eleventh grade students to help them with the NJGPA assessment, which is very similar to the NJSLA assessment. And I believe you guys are aware that there's a lot of VSL or ML bilingual training going on throughout the district due to our increasing numbers, and one of those trainings is our Psyop training, which helps non-ESL teachers provide instruction that is beneficial to VSL students. You know, they don't go to college for that, so we need to help them help their students. At the middle school in Linwood, obviously we offer our courses, which do impact our eighth grade math scores, but you know, it just takes one or the other. We also have interventionists. We're very lucky to have that at a middle school level that provide pull-out and push-in interventions. We offer ELA math tutoring, and last year we made it NJSLA-based, and that was very successful. We're going to be able to do a comparison of how many of students who received those services were able to improve their skills score. And Mrs. Norales has been working on newcomer programming for MBTMS and dual-language programming at Linwood. We've been doing dual-language for a long time at the elementary schools, but it's getting moved up to the other grade. So it's a slow process, but a very positive one. And this year, we implemented or hired a math coach to support our grade five through the teachers. I think that our data shows that was a necessary move, and we're very excited to have Mrs. Mori providing that support for helping teachers improve their instructional practices, implement small group instruction, the things that we know move. At the elementary level, there's so, you know, less to have academic support teachers at every level, every subject. We have morning and math achievement programs, which we fund with CIS funds. There's a lot of tutoring going on, including High Impact Tutoring, Literacy Tutoring. And obviously, Mrs. Morbit has been implementing a new ELA program, which we started this year for grades three and four, and we're piloting for grades K one and two called Benchmark, which is supposed to help with moving into more of a science of reading-based instruction, a little bit away from workshop-based instruction. Some challenges, you know, I think these are not unique to our funded. We do have to continue to focus on our special education and multilingual language learners. Their data is our data. We will continue to do that. A lot of our students are lacking foundational reading skills, especially our ML students. So if you're an eighth grader, you come to our country, you missed all of our phonics instruction. And now we have to figure out what's a developmentally appropriate way to help you learn how to read when you're no longer a little baby, like you're not a kindergarten or a first grader. Another struggle obviously is our ML students must take the assessment. I don't know that that's a fair way to assess them because there's so many other barriers for them, but it's a challenge. There's a lot of transient enrollment. I'm just trying to work for it because I had to, and we have four hundred transfers from last May to September. I was surprised by that number. There's a lot of moving in and out, and the continuity of instruction really does affect how students learn, and that goes right along with staffing shortages. You know, if you have classrooms where a consistent teacher isn't there, or there's a sub, or we can't hire people for a really tough program, so even though Mrs. Peta does an amazing job, I don't know how she does it, it becomes difficult to provide that instruction in a continuous manner. Those are some challenges. And then next steps, you know, today is our job to continue to try to improve despite the challenges. We will be conducting classroom walkthroughs at the predicated twelfth grade level. This is new for us in terms of it being district-wide and very systematic, so we're really excited about that. Dr. Johnson, I will be joining a lot of the walkthroughs. We have a consistent walkthrough tool. We're hoping that some of that data in terms of patterns and trends can help us determine what our teachers' needs are. Our content area supervisors, who I always want to plug because they're just fantastic, are working with administrators, interventionists, coaches to analyze our assessment data. We're currently in the middle of math and lots of other data, you know. There's constant formative assessment happening to determine potential gaps in our curriculum, make plans for addressing our students' needs. All of the high schools back will be receiving Universal Design for Learning training, which is really just good teaching, but I want to highlight that because it's very unique for a high school to do that. High school teaching tends to be a little more traditional, but we see a need for more differentiated instruction despite the content that I know they have to deliver based on students' needs to pass to a class, credits to graduate. There's a lot of, you know, nuance there, but we have to kind of try to do it all together. Pass your classes, get your credits, but also get those skills that you're lacking. And then even our ELA teachers at Linwood are receiving phonics training. Believe it or not, our fifth graders are coming in with a lot of reading struggles, and our ELA teachers don't always have primary grade training from their educational programs. So we are starting to give them that training so that they can address those needs in fifth and sixth grade classrooms. Lastly, our NJTSSS initiatives, while they're nice and solid now, they do not end. We'll continue to have data team meetings three times a year to discuss tier-one instructional strategies and continue to support our tier-two and tier-three. If you have any questions about the assessment, the administration of the assessment, or would love to see data and more stuff. I have a million and one graphed charts, spreadsheets that you can peruse. Please email me anytime. Also, visit our assessment page, which I inherited from Mrs. Peta and have continued to maintain, and has a wealth of information on there regarding our mandated state assessments. These presentations all get posted on that page, also pertinent information for parents regarding testing schedules, things of that nature. Questions about obviously curricular programming, we go to Dr. Johnson. Questions about special education, we go to Mr. Harry, who's here today.
Madam President, may I?
Oh, absolutely.
Um, I was going to say, thank you. I know this is, can you hear me? Actually, this is very difficult, so I'm looking at this, right? I, I, because I was looking at some of them like, okay, is there a mistake? There's no green. And at my first, I'm like, huh. But then, you know, because I read this before it came, but I was like, okay, hold on. This is very, very positive, kind of in a way, like the end part, because one person in this district, or you could be technically on paper, you could be only Hispanic or Latino and have a disability, right? But no, you could be Hispanic, Asian, Black, White, in one person and have, and be poor, right? Because I'm poor, but I'm here, right? So I'm still a poor person, but I'm not economically disadvantaged. So we could be all of this, and I could be from another country, because I'm a refugee, and I'm here, right? And that's not my generation, that's my parents' and parents'. So now I'm just a byproduct of that. So we're trying, and thank you. It's not a color thing, it's not a religion thing, it's like, we are all trying because we are American at the end of the day, and we're really, really trying, so thank you for trying along with us.
Thank you. We are definitely, I cannot take any credit, trying to just do the things that we know work for students despite the barriers, right? Because there are always in public education going to be barriers, but we certainly don't want to use those as excuses. I was happy with the number of places where we made improvement regardless of how small that percentage was. It was a good, positive direction. And when I look at the school data on a school-by-school level, you see, you know, a lot of growth from twenty-two, twenty-three to now. Obviously, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, we're not there yet, right? Those numbers are, it's going to be a while. Those numbers were great, but we're hoping to get there, that's our goal.
And we are doing a lot of the right things. And again, it's not a one-year process. We've spent years developing the MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, the data teams doing it the right way, and the implementation takes a long time, supporting our teachers in their instruction and being in there in the classrooms and making sure that that's what's happening. Those are some of our goals this year, and we're going to continuously push to improve those goals. That is one of our goals this year, is to improve student academic outcomes despite some of the challenges that we may have.
Yes, all of the administrators are aware, while we always had to focus on it, laser focused on it, trying to continue to improve achievement, continue to make positive growth, and not see any negative or backwards growth. Any other questions?
Just a question slash statement. I would be curious to see the, what you had talked about with the NJSLA tutoring specifically to see those numbers, because if that's something that is working, that's something that we could definitely push heavily. So I think I would be most curious to see that specifically. And just to comment about the science, I mean, that's kind of, it's a bit frustrating because especially if we're on the same level as the state, that kind of, that kind of tells, exactly, that kind of tells me something that...
This is only the second year they've actually released results for that test, is that correct?
No, third year.
The third year, I think the first year they were kind of very late and kind of funny in the way they released it.
It's not the same...
And we haven't seen any of the questions.
It's not NJSLA, it's a different, I'm sorry, it's not...
Not Pearson.
It's a different assessment.
And we haven't seen any of the questions, we're not privy to have yet.
We can see standards, but the question, if you've got an analysis, if you think you did poorly on standard three point one, next year you start like targeting that.
Sure.
Next year that won't even be on the test. So you have to be really careful when you start teaching to the test.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Mrs. Toth, Ms. Toth, I'm curious about the NJSLA stuff too, because it was actually really hard for us to do that. We were so hesitant to do a program that would teach to the test, but we just felt we'd try something different.
Right.
So I will definitely share that with you.
Yeah, that would be great. And we were able, the state actually has given us more money for the High Impact Tutoring grant to allow us, which probably will allow us to continue it through the school year.
That's great.
Do we have like more granular data about the students in the, like the schools where, let's say, the elementary? And is it possible to see, are there students or grades that are performing a little bit better than their peers across the district? And maybe there's best practices that can be pulled out of those classrooms that may apply?
And Mr. Wen, that is a great practice, is why PLS exists, right? To talk about what are you doing? And then obviously, it gets a little tricky, you don't want to talk data with teachers, you can't share each other's data. But as administrators, we can see, okay, Ms. Toth's class on this particular standard did really well, she could share however she taught that unit, that's exactly what we try to do at PLS. But we do have lots of granular data, some really cool mobility reports that show us how we moved from each level, one, two, three, four, or five, across five years by school. So I've seen some really positive data. I just looked at LPs with Mr. Dawson yesterday, and honestly, we were just pleased, it's just like thirty-two percent better than last year. I mean, you can't be any happier for that kind of increase, even if it's not getting us into the four and five.
So still and steady, we want to keep moving forward.
You said something about four hundred kids being transient in a district. Did we then also, I mean, we didn't have a loss of total four hundred kids, we actually had some new come in, right? So that hurts us too, because God knows where they're getting their education from before they come to us and where they're really at, right?
Yes.
That's a huge impact for us.
That's a whole school's worth of students.
Sure. It's all grade level, basically, right?
They should choose what they, what they each encounter, each environment, but it's also bad, because you could have been anywhere and that, you could have not had that instruction at all, and now we're really basically starting from scratch. And we're not saying that we're better than someone else, but we're just different. And now the student has to adapt to that difference.
Right, yeah. And with the multilingual language learners, a lot of them have come from interrupted schooling. And, you know, they've had, some of them have had multiple years where they had no schooling.
Yeah.
And so we have to adjust for that, and it doesn't matter if they've had interrupted schooling or not. If they come in after, before July first or June first, they still have to take the English part of the NJSLA. So even though we look at the Access for Ls test that Yessenio was telling us about last month, and we see that, you know, there's definite levels that you follow as you are learning a language, there's no way these students are going to be able to perform on this test. Why don't we just let the Access for Ls be the test for English language learners? It's very frustrating. And then they have to take the math, and maybe they haven't even been exposed to, you know, higher level math yet, but they're still required because of the grade that they're placed in to take that class. So again, challenges, but it's not an excuse for us. We continue to work very hard, and we know our teachers and our administrators are very dedicated. And Mrs. Chang, we appreciate your presentation every year. It's a hard thing to do, and I think you've presented it in a positive way to show us the trends, that we're, you know, the good and the bad, and the honest, so I think that's really, really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mercy.
Thank you for being here.
Appreciate it.
See you next September. So Mr. Harry gets to follow up that great performance. He is our Director of People Personnel Services, and he is going to present the DLM results, which is our special education, a very special part of our special education students. You might want to talk, you're a quieter talker, so you may want to talk more directly into the microphone. Thank you. I don't know if it's quite on. Yeah, I can tell this is there. Yeah. Much better. You're on.
My name is Chris Harry, I'm the Director of People Personnel Services, and I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the spring 2024 DLM assessment. DLM stands for Dynamic Learning Maps. The NJADU, we came out and developed a specific test for students with significant intellectual disabilities for students in special education. So it's a very small subset of our students. It's an online assessment. It's for math and language arts, grades three, three, and eleven, and then science five, eight, and eleven.
You don't need to look at the visuals.
It's interesting, or it's important to note that the DLM shows the relationship between skills and the multiple learning pathways. It allows for multiple pathways to be recognized, that there are alternate ways for students to demonstrate that they've learned a skill. Please remember that this is an online assessment for our post-identically impaired students. That's a difficult task in and of itself. The Learning Map is a network of sequential learning targets, and it shows a learning landscape, which multiple skills are related to many other skills. This does meet the requirements of federal requirements for testing and NJADU requirements Students that are taking the DLM demonstrate their knowledge and links to the grade level standards with the assistance of staff that have been guided. The results are focused on one stream and can be compared or generalized to... The results are focused on one student and can't be compared or generalized to other students or grade levels or anything like that. So when you see the results at the end, it's really focused on, you know, what one student is doing. It's not, you can't compare it, and you really can't compare it year to year either. Excellent. So that's really, this is really the D L M testing experience. Who's being tested in the classrooms, grades three to eight, eleven? Again, science is five, eight, and eleven. It's one-on-one setting with the student teacher. The teachers are certified as special education teachers. They have a background in English, math, or science. They complete all the required training. Important to, again, no teachers are permitted to help the students with technology questions. They can clarify questions, and the students work at their own pace. The D L M was administered last spring and April and May. There was five to seven test sessions for ELA math and then nine test sessions for science. It sounds like a lot, but if you look, each session might take five to fifteen minutes. It's not a long, it's not a longer time. And again, there was assistance, and it's, you know, one-to-one. Those are the performance levels, how the students are rated, either emerging, approaching, at target, or advanced. Again, the test generates no raw scores, percentages, no scaled scores, so you're not going to see that. The results are based on a student's probability of mastering each skill. Statewide, students typically perform in the emerging and approaching categories. The summary of the students mastery is based off of the essential elements of what you're attempting to learn in English, English, or math or science. So here you'll see language arts literacy, grades three through five. There was fifteen students that took the test. Forty-seven percent were emerging, forty-six percent were approaching, six percent were Language arts, six through eight, eleven. Thirty-six students took the test. Twenty, twenty-six percent? Twenty-two percent?
Oh, yay. Sorry.
Forty-five percent were emerging, thirty-nine approaching, thirty percent at target. Six percent were advanced. Move to math, grades three through five. Again, the same fifteen students. Eighty percent were emerging, fifteen percent approaching, or thirteen percent approaching, seven percent at target, and one were advanced. Math, six, eight, eleven. Same students. Emerging fifty-six percent, approaching thirty-six, at target nine percent. Science, twenty-one students took the test. Sixty-two percent were emerging, twenty-nine percent were approaching, and nine percent were at target. So what does that tell us? What are the conclusions here? What does that really tell us? In general, we looked at the scores from last year, and the scores for this year were a little bit better. Great, but what does that really mean? The students, it's a very individualized test. It's based off of the essential elements and the skills that the students are demonstrating at the time. So overall, we looked at, you know, patterns, if you really could. So, you know, overall, we decreased the number of students in the emerging level in grades three, four, seven, eight, eleven in all subjects. In grades three, four, seven, eleven, we have increased the number of students who performed with the approaching target in both English and math. And then we increased the number of grade six through eleven students who performed at target in English, language arts, and science. So it sounds positive, but again, you know, it's very individualized at the same time. So the next steps and interventions, and really the first bullet here is the most important part of it, I feel like. We're going to continue to monitor the students' progress towards their specific I U P goals. So we'll look at the information that we received back from this test, and we'll see, you know, how we can implement any of that information or data in the I U P or the goals and objectives in the I U P. That would really be a purpose to, okay? We're going to continue to provide the targeted instruction that we already provide, okay? But, you know, if we're looking at certain skills, you can provide extra targeted instruction. The teachers are already doing that, they're working very hard on it. And the last bullet is really one of the things that we're really pushing this year is the instructional walkthroughs at all levels and all classes to provide staff and administrative valuable feedback. Not just special education, but general education programs, but obviously, you know, this is the D L M, so we're very specific to these self-contained, or we call them cross-grade classes here in our program. So we want to stay focused on every student and not just focus on, you know, students in, say, inclusion or research room. We want to look at all students in special education and happen and progress thoroughly based off of their unique abilities.
I think that's the last slide.
That's the last slide.
Any questions on the D L M for Mr. Harry?
No questions, just a comment. Just really appreciate what you're doing with our special needs population. I know with the kids that I work with in Buddy Ball, you know, progress is, you know, week to week, month to month, year by year, that we see progress, but we do see progress. And just like what you said, it's kind of individual. We see each kid for what they can do, and as long as we do that, I think that's, you know, how we do good by that. So thank you so much.
Thank you. This is very kind of you. You know, the teachers, the staff, the hyperprofessionals, the administrators, we all work as a team here. And we really want to see every student as an individual and, you know, treat them as we would parlor family members and give them the best that we can. So I know that's what we're doing in our classes, and I'm very proud of it.
I too struggle with what this data actually means for D L M, just because of the nature of the students that we're talking about. Of course, we're talking about students with severe cognitive disabilities, which makes perfect sense that, you know, judging them to the standard or expecting that there's going to be significant gains or improvements is really unlikely because we're talking about them individually. But when we're looking at students that are six through eleven, we've got thirty-six students that are being tested, just as Mr. Wen is speaking to, I think it's really critical that we're focusing more on their ability versus their disability and dealing with life skills, right? So for these students that are in at least high school, right, nine through eleven, we are also targeting life skills while we're looking at D L M and testing them, just as we're testing all of our students, right, to make sure that they're prepared to be productive citizens of society when they are done with their high school career. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. The State Department of Education Office of Special Education Programs has really pushed the idea of transition for, you know, some years now.
Right.
And are really interested in what our students are doing after school. We actually just completed a survey, and I can give you, you know, information, maybe at the next education committee, maybe about how our students are performing transitionally.
Okay.
We do, we have solid transition eighteen, twenty-one program here, and there's also programs that we align with throughout the state and obviously Moses County.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Mr. Harry. We appreciate it. And back to you, Madam President.
All right, thank you. We will continue with our regular meeting. Ms. Keefe, would you please take item six?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following board minutes. Regular public meeting minutes, August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Executive meeting minutes, August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, and special meeting minutes, September seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All the meetings are accepted.
Thank you. Any communications this evening?
No communications. I have my administrative report.
Great. I can jump right to that then.
Thank you. All right. Not sure this is working. You know, I don't, questionable?
That's true.
So I will just continue to use my teacher voice. Good evening to all of our families, guests, and viewers here tonight. Our district would like to thank Seventeenth Legislative District Assemblyman Joe Danielson for the fifty backpacks and school supplies he has donated to the students of our district, Chick-fil-A of North Brunswick, who did a school supply drive this summer for M B T schools, and successfully collected a lot of supplies to be divided amongst our schools, the United Way of Milltown, who donated school supply-filled backpacks also to be given out within the districts. I would like to thank all of our staff and families for a very smooth start to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Our back-to-school nights were also a great success. It's great to see the community come out and support our students. Thank you to Mercy Chang and Chris Harry for presenting tonight on NJSLA and D L M scores. In connection with their presentation, I am also sharing with the board this evening the results of our NJ CUSAC monitoring review from last year, its Quality Single Accountability Continuum. We spent most of last year focused on that, and this was emailed to us last Friday, and I am required by law to present this information to the board at the next public meeting after we receive that, and so that is this evening. Pursuant to the requirements, the North Brunswick Township School District has undergone the New Jersey's Quality Single Accountability Continuum review. The Middlesex County Superintendent and team conducted review of the district's self-assessment on the district performance review called the D P R to verify the district's compliance in the five areas of NJ CUSAC: Instruction and Program, Fiscal Management, Governments, and Operations, and Personnel. Based on the review, I'm going to go to this slide so you can see this. These are our scores. In Instruction and Program, we scored a seventy-eight. Fiscal Management was a ninety-six. Governments, Governance, a ninety-three. Operations, a ninety-eight percent, and Personnel, a hundred percent. The points missed in Fiscal Management, Governments, and Operational were based on late filings of state reports. In Governments, we are actually appealing one of the findings that we did not report, our gifted and talented teachers, which we did. So we're wondering if they got the word coordinator mixed up with the fact that they were actually the teachers of the program. So we didn't feel like we need that score, so we may be able to have that score adjusted. Because the district did not satisfy the eighty percent line of the indicators in Instruction and Program, we reached seventy-eight percent. Regulations require that the district create a district improvement plan to address all non-compliant areas of the D P R. Over the next month, we will be working to prepare the district improvement plan for submission and accompanying the board approval before the November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four deadline. In the Instruction and Program area, the district was fully compliant with all curricular indicators. Our lower score of seventy-eight is indicative of our NJSLA test scores in ELA, math and science, not making the eighty percent threshold. As we work to develop our district improvement plan, it actually will tie in seamlessly with the work that we're already doing this year. Our focus this year is to increase student achievement on this slide and our district goals. The district will work to increase academic achievement for all students, inclusive of all curricular areas, through a focus on MTSS, promoting engaging instruction, promoting school attendance, and by conducting regular classroom walkthroughs. We are already working on outlining these details in an action plan that will be shared with the board next month, as well as all principal goals from each school, which will be an academic goal for each school to improve their academic scores. These items will also be worked into our district improvement plan as required by the CUSAC. Building teams have already begun their classroom walkthroughs to gain clarity of the instruction in each classroom and to look for trends and instructional techniques. We look forward to continuing to report back to the board of our progress in this area. A lot of the things that we've already started to put in place, including the cell phones, no cell phones in classrooms, to increase our student focus, looking at research-based programs that can make a move in instruction, and how we can help support our teachers to getting there, is part of the detailed plans that we're working on to share with the board. Finally, Madam President, I would like to welcome our two student representatives, Megan Keefe and Mia Montero, familiar names to this board, to our board meeting this evening, and we look forward to their participation on the board this year. So that is it for my report this evening, Madam President.
Great, thank you so much. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Ms. Megan Keefe and Ms. Mia Montero, following in your family's footsteps, which we love to see. So we will turn it over to you, and we look forward to getting your reports every month.
Thank you. So I'm Megan Keefe, and for those of you who don't know, I'm the S G O president this year, and at every meeting, Mia is going to be joining me, and she's the board representative this year. So first off, I want to talk about our club fest, and this is how all of the students at the high school specifically get introduced to all the clubs at our schools. So we have, on September fifth, we had an extended homeroom, and that means that each class is shortened by a few minutes. So homeroom is twenty minutes long, and the students watch a video of all the clubs that are at the school, and then after school, they can meet all the representatives, sign a paper for what clubs they're interested in, or they can fill out a Google form, and then the advisors will add them to the Google classroom, and you can get more information when attending the first meeting. First meetings happened last week, and we were really pleased to see so many students that attended those meetings and are getting involved in clubs at our school. Then last week, we had our first S G O meeting, and we did a vote for what our school charity was going to be this year, and this year is Raiders Home Plate. Mrs. Kiwa is going to be talking to us next week about how our fundraising money is going to help out the students at the high school, as well as the greater community, and our goal this year is five thousand dollars. Next week, we're going to put up the Pep Week banners, and Pep Week is the week before homecoming. And for Monday's theme, we have a Hawaiian theme, so we're hoping to see lots of people decked out in hula skirts and looking fun throughout the halls. Then Tuesday is Dynamic Duo, so you can think of Batman, Robin, Salt and Pepper, Good Cobb, Bad Cobb, and all their favorite dynamic duos. Wednesday is Pink Out to support breast cancer awareness. And then Thursday is Typical Class Colors Day. Freshmen wear green, sophomores wear red, juniors wear blue, seniors wear black, and teachers wear their gray staff shirts. And then Friday is Raiders Pride, and we wear blue and gold, and then have a pep rally at the end of the day.
And then grades nine and twelve have started their apparel fundraisers to fundraise for their own events, and they've been going really good so far, so we're excited for some proms and other events like that. National Art Society students were guides at back-to-school night to help parents get their shoes, costumes, and figure out schedules in our wonderfully large high school building. And Latin American Club has been making announcements to honor Hispanic Heritage Month. So this past week, they posted the Pep Week. So Monday was Sports Day, so all the students wore colorful jerseys from different Latin sports teams. Tuesday was like Dressing Your Favorite Latin Celebrity Day, and it was really fun to just see people kind of wearing wonderful clothes. And I remember like three teachers were in the hallway dressed as pitbulls. It was so much fun. Today was Cis en Puedo, which is like showing like what Hispanic people are able to do. So like, you could wear yellow, you could wear college hoodies, and like casual women's things like that. Tomorrow is Teo, Teo, which is like Hispanic uncles and aunts, so it's kind of a more fun day just to show off the culture a little bit. And then Friday is Frontera Day, which is like where your country's flag, or just the Hispanic countries' flags, to show that nation's support. So Hispanic Latin American Club has been doing a really good job at really bringing the whole school into Hispanic Heritage Month, and they are also decorating the showcase in the commons, so the students across the school can really see the culture and things like that, and we're sure they have more stuff, more fun stuff planned to highlight Hispanic tradition. Thank you.
Great, welcome. All right, we will turn it over to our committees at this time. Mr. Brockman, Human Resources.
Sure, Madam President. The Human Resource Committee, Human Resources Community Relations Committee met on Wednesday, September eighteenth, to discuss various personnel and community topics. For those on tonight's agenda who are either resigning or retiring, the board thanks them for their services and wishes them well. There are also many new staff and substitute staff on tonight's agenda, and we welcome all of them to our district and look forward to having you work with us here in North Brunswick. As of last Wednesday, any remaining vacancies for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year continue to be posted and can be found on our district website, social media pages, and posted in each of our buildings. For teaching positions, alternate route, and traditional route candidates, all are both encouraged, all are encouraged to apply. Our administration team recently participated in two job fairs sponsored by NJ School Jobs and continue to encourage any new or current educator interested in joining our team to view our job openings on our website and social media pages. Our new staff recruitment video can also be viewed on those sites. There are several reassignments on tonight's agenda, and we thank our staff for taking on those new assignments. We discussed any upcoming leaves of absences for the remainder of the school year and for next year, and how those positions may be filled via daily subs, long-term substitutes, or period... how those positions may be filled via daily subs, long-term substitutes, or period teaching stipends. Also on tonight's agenda, there are several staff approved for degree-level changes, and we congratulate them on this accomplishment. The committee had its first reading of the following mandated policies: physical examination, emergency and crisis situations, firearms and weapons, and volunteer athletic coaches, and co-curricular activity advisors and assistants. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Carter will be filling in for Mr. LaGore tonight for Business Operations. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. The Business Operations Committee met on Wednesday, September eighteenth. We discussed topics including a parent group has donated a covered bench for lacrosse and soccer. We'd like to thank them for this contribution. We'll also be buying a matching one. We also discussed swim team pool rental contracts with three local towns, as well as multiple policy and regulation updates included in the agenda under Policy Section 1A and 1B. The committee also reviewed status, updates, and photos of a portfolio of projects that are being updated throughout the district. This included completed projects at the high school related to recommissioning of ten seasons four units, updates to the 500 Wing in Patio C, and the TV studio at Linwood, the construction of two classrooms in the MRC, updates to the roof and installation of fencing, and for the elementary schools, Parson and Judd, pre-K courtyards were rubberized, Livingston Park, traffic flow updates, as well as numerous other projects that are in progress. So we will continue to monitor the projects in progress, and we'll do our best to continue to ensure our students have safe and functional facilities. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Ali will be filling in for Dr. Patel tonight. Thank you for our Education Committee.
You're welcome. And before I read, I just want to say, I'm a little conflicted because my parents are Gen X, but I graduated high school in 2012, so if I'm a little anxious because I'm supposed to look at people when I talk to them, but I'm using my phone to read the report, so I just want everyone to know, okay? So the Education Committee met on September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and we met at six PM, and we ended at seven PM. And I was in attendance, Dr. Patel, and so was Ms. James. And we have a few updates. I like these because it's about, you know, learning and teachers and our students. So first update is going to be our assessment in grants. We have our High Impact Tutoring update, so that's going well. We sent their invites out to families, and we are really just going to keep going to June to expend the rest of the funds we have from the state. Summer tutoring was a success. We had fifty-two grades, and it was for the younger students, so five, fifth grade through eighth grade, and planning is underway for this fall. Right now, we have about a hundred seats for NJGPA, our virtual tutoring, tutoring, two hundred seats for ESL virtual tutoring, tutoring. We have eighty seats for ELA math. That's going to be for grades five through eight, and that's going to be virtual as well. And then the elementary schools will have tutoring, will be in person, and we're going to, we're still working on those exact numbers, but hopefully we have updates soon. And then our ESR grant, and then acronym GOC is E-S-S-E-R, so that is completed and will be done on nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-four. And for E-S-E-A grant, the high school is receiving Title I SIA funds, and we're really working on a smart, inclusive, and equitable way to use these funds and resources for the betterment of our students' education. And then for the district, we also received Title III funds, so we already, as a group, have a nineteen thousand board approved, and they are going to be used for our newcomer programs, and newcomer programs, you know, are for everyone, since we are, you know, a pretty diverse country. Newcomer could be anybody, it could be any one of us, any one of our cousins, because we're all coming from somewhere. So that's that, and that's going to be, those are really fun, because we get to really meet people where they're at, and the state's helping us fund that. And then for NJSLA, so we saw the report tonight, these, the twenty-twenty-five dates were released on nine-eleven, twenty-twenty-four, God bless, and then the timeline was shared with families on nine-seventeen. And then for NJGPA, we are looking over and working as a team to really just figure out the scheduling, figure out what's going to be the best for the whole school system, parents, teacher, staff, and everyone, because testing's never easy or fun for anyone, but we gotta, we have to do it. It's not, nobody probably wants to, but the state makes us, and state, we can't, we can't say no, right? Well, we can, then we won't get money. So, and lastly, well, not lastly, but this is another fun part, curriculum, instruction, and technology. So at the middle schools, we're piling two initiatives this fall. The first initiative is going to be a Flex PLC, and that is going to be for the staff. They will be meeting one time a week, and they're going to be meeting with cross-disciplinary teams to holistically support students, as well as make the staff's job a little easier, because if the students are doing better, they're, like, the staff isn't working as hard, hopefully, right? And that'll be the goal. So we're really just working together to make sure that we could figure out the best way to reach our students where they're at, support them academically, as well as holistically. And then secondly, Wednesday, get it, Wednesday? Every other Wednesday, we're going, I'm sorry, I thought it was cool. Every other Wednesday, we're going to, we're planning events with students, and we're going to be doing SEL-focused community supports, just really to ensure the students get academic support, counseling, and it's a combination of both delivered through SEO. And then for the, those are some of our newcomer programs, and then for the high school AP scholarship, scholar certificates, we have a hundred and twelve students who receive certificates, so that's awesome. Shout out to them. The average score was three-point-five-nine, and that's amazing, because I graduated undergrad, no, I graduated high school with a three-point-oh, then I graduated grad school with a four-point-oh, so a three-point-five-nine in AP in high school, that's stellar. So shout out to the teachers and to the students and the parents, because it's a team effort. And then, so to give you the backstory, to receive the capstone diploma or to receive anything for what's next in their career as a student, the students must earn three or higher in an AP seminar, AP research, and on four additional AP exams of their choice to receive an AP seminar and research certificate. So students must earn a score of three or higher in an AP seminar or exam, research. So essentially, long story short, the students really worked hard for that, so that's awesome. I just want to emphasize that. But the teachers really worked hard too, as well. And then for the district walkthroughs for all teachers, this is going to be an update for all teachers, tenured and non-tenured. We're going to have, well, the staff and the district will be having a minimum of ten walkthroughs this year with a focus on teaching and learning, and the information will be used to really inform the section leaders, and the admin is like, okay, if, hopefully, you know, in perfect world, if the staff comes, say like, hey, this is what we see, and the admin says, hey, this is what we see, we can meet somewhere in the middle to find a solution to hopefully do one percent better. So that's the goal from my perspective, from our meeting. And then for this year, the data teams, they are going to really be trying to lock in and really just tune in the multi-tier system of support and using the New Jersey's framework, but we're not New Jersey, we're North Brunswick, so we're going to try to do what works to our population within the standards, because that's what we do best here, to the best of our abilities. And then for the report card, here's a pretty good update for, well, all these are updates, but this is also good, because these are youngest. K to four, so the NJSLS in the ELA, there's some updates there, and then the grade five has, was switched to the traditional grading, which streamlines the report card process, so there won't be two different versions at Linwood anymore moving forward. And then for people and personnel services, so the H2H Power Program, which is our title for restored practices, so for folks at home who may or may not know, I'm just going to give you what we're going to say our restored practices are going to look like for now. It's really going to be a student diversion and restoration program, and the goal is, it's going to be set in out of the Mead School Building, the old district building, and it's going to be a flexible program, and we're hopefully running it as needed, and it's going to start with high school students, and it's going to expand to the rest of the district as needed. And we hope the goal is to get three to four full hours of instruction time, and we will provide transportation, have speakers to hopefully motivate them, so guests, and then we will also be working on positive interactions, and that will hopefully start in October. And then, so George Scott, he's a licensed marital and family counselor, they are going to be doing a presentation, and they are going to be working with the students and just working with our staff to see different ways and just trying to do things a little better and optimize and help our learning. And moving on to our last and most amazing part of this is the policies. So there's been policies, these are our first readings in our committee on the eighteenth. So we currently have for curricular content, policy two-two-zero-zero is the one we're referencing, so we are updating it. So we have one, and Strauss SMA proposed an update based off of the new mandates from the state. So I'm not going to read the entire policy, I'm only going to read what was highlighted and changed. So the revision is, Policy Guide two-two-zero-zero has been revised to remove a list referencing numerous New Jersey student learning standards, the acronyms NJSLS, which I was saying earlier. This list did not include all the standards, and since NJSLS standards are continually changing, like our population and the world around us, it's very appropriate to remove reference to specific NJSLS standards from Policy Guide two-two-zero-zero. Removal of this list avoids Policy Guide two-two-zero-zero from becoming non-compliant if any of the listed standards were to change or additionally, additional standards are added. That's the first one. And the second one I'm going to be reading, it's a policy and a regulation, and this is policy for attendance, and the regulation policy, they're both under attendance and regulation policies, and it's five-two-zero-zero. And again, I'm just going to read the changes. So the first change will be to the attendance regulation policy, no, the attendance policy, yes. So Regulation Guide five-two-zero-zero has been updated to include the provision of a state excuse absence for attendance at a civic event, the definition of a civic event, and the required procedure for approval of such an absence. Regulation Guide five-two-zero-zero has also been revised to include an option in Section D1 addressing whether or not a student would be required to provide a written statement for an absence longer than a district-designated number of consecutive school days. The district is also adding language in the policy to address family vacations exceeding ten days or more in which students will be moved for registration and have to be reregistered upon return. And these are both state-mandated. The last part I read is what we are adding in its coordination under the guidelines of the state, because otherwise we couldn't do that. The next one is for our policy for service animals, and this is going to be five-three-seven-seven, but before I say that, I just want to put a little sidebar. And, you know, some of us can't take ten days off from work and expect, you know, so it's, it's about equity, right? So this is, you know, the state is doing it, we're trying to be equitable as a district for everybody. So the next one is about policy for service animals, so it's five-three-three-seven. Policy Guide five-three-three-seven has been revised to include NJSA eighteen-a dash, I mean eighteen-a forty-six dash thirteen point three, permitted access for service animals. This New Jersey statute outlines the requirements addressing service animals in schools. And this is a recommended policy guide, recommendation from, from the state. And the last one is five-three-five-zero, and this is a true warning, it's about, you know, life being taken, so it's about suicide prevention policy. And this is an update, and this is a mandated update, as stated, revised to include several new statute sections. The new requirements are as follows: training requirements for additional staff members. The requirement for any staff required by NJSA eighteen-a six dash one-twelve, one-one-two, so that's just one-twelve, to be trained to warn and protect when they have information that a student intends to harm themselves, and a requirement to notify all staff who are required to be trained in accordance with NJSA, I mean state, state, yeah, eighteen-a six dash one-twelve, of the district's supporting and suicide prevention awareness and response protocols. And that, again, is mandated. And thank you, Madam President. That is all.
Thank you very much. And those policies are listed on tonight's agenda as well. We will finalize the committee reports with Ms. Keefe, negotiations.
Yes, Madam President. I am happy to say that on tonight's agenda for the full board approval on page twelve, Personnel Item CC is the approval of the successor contract with our MBTEA for the twenty-four to twenty-seven school year. We would like to thank Ms. Pastor, Ms. Herrick, the entire negotiating team, their leadership team, our teachers. We appreciate your partnership, we appreciate your leadership, we appreciate all that you do for the district, and we are looking forward to our continued partnership for years to come. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we'll move to item nine. Mr. Wen, would you please state item number nine, please?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the administrative, student, and committee reports.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
All the reports are accepted.
Thank you. At this time, we'll take a moment to review our agenda. As always, the board has received the agenda prior to tonight's meeting. We've had time to review it, so we will go through the agenda at this time. Pages two and three, four and five, six and seven, eight and nine, ten and eleven, twelve and thirteen, fourteen and fifteen, sixteen and seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, pages twenty and twenty-one, and wrapping up on twenty-two and twenty-three. So at this time, we'll have a public session on agenda items only. If you would like to come up to the microphone and speak to agenda items only, this is now the time. We ask that you just state your name, and you'll be given three minutes. Good evening.
You might have to pick it up from talking to me.
Yeah.
Good.
Good evening. My name is Jen Herrick, and on behalf of the North Brunswick Township Education Association, we would like to thank the board for approving the new three-year staff contract tonight. Although our path to an agreement wasn't easy, we remain committed to collaborate and working together with the board to provide outstanding education to the students of North Brunswick in safe schools with excellent school employees. We also continue our aspiration to be inclusive of our families at home, and so now this message will be translated in Spanish.
Buenas noches. También continuamos con nuestra aspiración de incluir a nuestras familias en casa, por eso ahora el mensaje de la asociación se traducirá al español. Acabo de hablar Jen Herrick, y en nombre de la Asociación de Educación de North Brunswick, nos gustaría agradecer a la junta por aprobar esta noche el nuevo contrato del personal de tres años. de tres años. Aunque nuestro camino hacía un acuerdo, no fue fácil, seguimos comprometidos con la colaboración y el trabajo con la junta para brindar una educación sobresaliente a los estudiantes de North Brunswick en las escuelas seguras, con excelentes empleados escolares. Gracias.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. We know that the road to get there was not easy, but we look forward to continuing working with you all as well, to another great couple of years ahead, so thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to echo that, you know, I wasn't on the committee, I don't know what's going on, other than what I was known, but I'm, I'm glad we got there and thank y'all for really doing what you do. You know, I was a pre-K person, I used to work in a classroom back in the day, not that long ago, but imagine, I can only imagine what y'all are doing now, so shout out to all the teachers and staff and everyone. Y'all, y'all make this go.
Thank you. At this time, we will close the public portion of the meeting. Can I please have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The public session is closed.
Thank you. Mr. Carter, would you please take item 13?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following consent agenda items: personnel, curriculum, miscellaneous, finance items 1 through 3, policy and transportation.
Second. Thank you.
I'm going to take roll call, okay? Here we go. Mr. Ali.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Brockman?
Yes, to all consent agenda items with the exception of curriculum instruction, item 1C, from which I abstain, and finance item 3I, which I vote now on.
No? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keefe?
Yes, with the exception of finance item 3G, page 19, from which I abstain.
Abstain, okay, thank you. Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Mr. Wen?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, we're good. All of the motions and resolutions have passed.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, we will move to page 22. I'll open it up to the public for a public session on any matter at this time. If you'd like to speak on anything, you can come up to the microphone, you'll be given three minutes, we just ask that you state your name. All right, seeing none, can we please have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The public session, this public session is closed.
Thank you. And at this time, we do not have a closed session this evening, so we will move to adjourn. Can I please have a motion to close the meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all very much, thanks for coming.
Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.